Technology issues. Okay, so call to order. Only coming up these acts except at the end. We're gonna go straight into Dr. Kelly for her comments.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, welcome back. I hope everyone who celebrated had a wonderful holiday this past week. And that all of you found time to be off schedule a bit and enjoying the company of those that mean the most to you. So, welcome back. I wanted to just thank our high school counseling department led by Erin Kind for all the time and effort put into our graduating seniors as they navigated the college admissions process. We're also grateful to all the teachers who wrote recommendations on our students' behalf. Our students did exceptionally well this admission season. And we look forward to hearing more from Erin about the trends that he has found this year later on in the spring. I just also wanted to give a brief update in terms of our new cellphone rules that went into effect this year. Um, as you know, we had um new rules implemented, uh, most significantly in the elementary and middle schools. In elementary, no devices can come to school that have any internet access. And if any Gizmos or non-internet access, um, devices came in, they had to stay in the elementary in their lockers all day. Um, and that has gone well. There's only been a handful of infractions throughout the school year. Um, and that resulted in the devices going down to the um elementary school office and parents having to pick them up. Um, so that was the deterrent. Um, in the middle school, um, we improved the process by investing in lockers, locked lockers, that were hung outside of each of the advisories because in middle school, that's where um every student starts their day. Um, that has worked out very well. Um, I give Anthony and Jo a lot of credit because every day, twice a day, more than twice a day, they're locking them in the mornings, they unlock them for lunch. Because we did feel strongly that if students were leaving uh school to go uptown, they should have um access to their phones. And then they lock them again after lunch. Um, in terms of a deterrent for anyone who was thinking about in the middle school not complying with these new rules, um, they did institute detention after school, um, which motivated kids to follow the rule because then they couldn't go to their co-curricular activities after school. Um, and again, there were less than ten incidents, I think, throughout the school year of maybe some middle school students needing a few reminders. Um, in the high school, they started the year with a stricter rule where the expectation was made uh uh clearly that the teachers didn't want to see cellphones in the classroom unless it was part of their lesson. Um, about thirty percent of the teachers opted to have racks to put the phones in. Um, the other seventy percent just made the rule clear. Um, Dr. Liverso is our new high school principal. Um, has been soliciting feedback from parents, from faculty, and also from high school students. Um, and that will result in some improvements for next year. So, more to come on high school rules. Both the elementary school and middle school feel very good about um the changes they implemented this year as it relates to cellphones and plan to continue that next year.
Okay.
You know what, um, may interrupt. I mean, for those who don't know, Connie Lawrence Otto's over there. She is the enforcer. And she makes sure that we keep everything in line. And I saw her give me the evil eye over there. I forgot to ask for a motion to accept the draft minutes from last month.
Motion second.
All favor? Aye. Very sorry, Louise.
Louise Cholcaps, it's our pleasure to have you as our student representative tonight on the board. And I think you have some highlights for us.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, I have a few updates about what's been happening and what's coming up in the high school. So, the third quarter ended on Friday, April fourth. So, um, grades were finalized and all students were able to see um their grades for the third quarter. High School Chorus took a field trip to see Moulin Rouge. And they participated in a high school choral workshop where they got to work with the actors from the show, which I thought was a great experience. Um, Bronco TV also took two amazing field trips. One of the sections went to ABC Studios in New York City and got to watch and meet the cast of The View. And the other class went to see George Clooney's new Broadway show, Good Night and Good Luck, which is a show about broadcasting during the Cold War. So, that were, those were two cool experiences that Mr. Doyle organized. Um, ninth grade health classes got the opportunity to have an assembly and some breakout sessions with the John Cleaver Kelly Foundation, um, which Ms. McGovern, the health teacher, organized. And that is a foundation that raises awareness for mental health issues. Um, next week is a spirit week for athletic council. So, um, throughout the week, there's gonna be different events and themes. And Monday, there's a breakfast for the entire high school, not just athletic teams. And Friday, there's the first annual bake-off between the varsity teams. So, I think that should be interesting. Um, and then there was also a really cool school-wide science extra credit opportunity um where uh Dr. Silva, who's a neurosurgeon, um, came and presented to all the science classes in the high school and gave a presentation showing clips and different information about what it's really like to be a neurosurgeon, which was a great opportunity. There was also, um, the PTA hosted a career roundtable about language and the way learning different languages can help in your career. And that was a credit for all foreign language classes, extra credit. And that was cool. And also, um, the spring student run play is this Thursday and Friday. And it is Twelve Angry Men. So, that should be great. The junior class government has been planning prom and tickets are on sale this Thursday and Friday. And as well, the SFL has been planning out Field Day, which should be after AP Week. And I'm sure everyone enjoyed spring break. And that's everything.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah, bye.
So, as you know, we are dedicated to um bringing the Bronx, the Bronxville Promise in action so that people have a good understanding of what the language means for our students day in and day out. Um, and this evening, I'm gonna ask Dr. Liverso and Ms. Meyer. And we have three teachers with us tonight, Martin Patmos and Alyssa Diaguardi, as well as Patrick Henderson, um, as well as students, to talk about um civil discourse. And for those of you who remember, when we revised the language to the promise, one of the updates we made was to incorporate civil discourse because we felt that was such an important skill for our students to have before they graduated and went on to their next chapter. So, please, we can all come up.
Everybody can come up.
Okay, some of you guys over here. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna share with you the work we've been doing the last few years around civil discourse. And we have some students to provide some comments in terms of their experience. So, first, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Liverso, who's gonna talk a little bit about where we started and where we are. And I will end at the end of the meeting talking about next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Um, so, one of the first things I got to learn about when I became principal was civil discourse. And it was really exciting work. I got to see it in action over the summer as well. So, I've been really in awe of this work. And I think our teachers have put a lot of thought into it. Um, I'm very excited to be a part of it. The purpose of the work is for our students to expand their knowledge and foster greater understanding of matters of public concern. Oftentimes this year, um, students have been given an opportunity to pick the topics they wanna discuss. And it really connects with the Bronxville Promise by enhancing critical thinking skills. So, our students get to analyze and evaluate arguments from multiple perspectives. And this allows them to develop a deeper understanding of more complex issues. So, as an overview of the work on the next slide, um, our stu-, our faculty began this work in the spring of two thousand and two. Uh, the following summer, a foundation grant was used by our English department to develop the civil discourse in every grade level. Um, this past summer, we had our English department collaborate with our social studies department. And the social studies department was able to develop the civil discourse modules across each grade level as well. So, this work continues over this summer as our faculty reviews the work of the school year and makes any revisions to the civil discourses that are already in existence. Um, on the next slide, um, just to showcase, uh, as part of the work this summer, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, common rubric was developed by our teachers for each civil discourse. It's very comprehensive. It probably has, I think, uh, maybe thirty elements. But obviously, you're not gonna use thirty elements for each discourse. So, teachers and students select different strands to use. And among these are perspective-taking, argumentation with evidence, uh, demonstrating empathy towards others by seeking to understand their perspectives. And lastly, critical thinking, which connects directly with our promise and involves analysis and fact-checking. So, this is just a brief overview of the work that's been done over the last few years. Our students are gonna provide their perspectives, uh, from their work in civil discourses this school year. We have some ninth graders who are gonna discuss their world history discourse in repatriation of ancient artifacts. And we have a twelfth grade group that's gonna discuss their civil discourse in AP Literature. But before you hear from them, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Patmos and Mr. Henderson to discuss more specifically the repatriation civil discourse.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, so, with the ninth grade, we were looking at the topic of repatriation, which essentially asks the question, uh, many artifacts from all over the world are sitting in museums. And the question is, should these artifacts be returned to their country of origin? Um, this is obviously a topic that has several different responses, answers, and then subsections that need to be sort of addressed, right? Because there are many issues on many levels. Um, our goal was to have the students read before they came into class. Uh, we had, I think, twelve articles that we were, had available. Each group was assigned three. Uh, these articles offer different perspectives on the topics. We very clearly labeled these articles, pro, con, or sort of like an overview or an informational article. And every group was assigned at least one from each category. So, they were receiving many different perspectives. Uh, some of these had specific topics. Some of these were more sort of generally kind of the issues surrounding this. Um, and when the students arrived in class, they were put into their groups to discuss what they had read at home. And then the groups were then shuffled around, right? So, they were interacting with other groups. And, you know, we tried to have the groups formed so that everyone in those smaller groups for discussion had read at least one of the articles, right? So, all twelve articles were represented. And then we discussed this, uh, in a class-wide. And there were guiding questions along the way, designed to help students think about this in a critical way. And while we're doing this, right, laying down kind of the, the baseline expectations for what is acceptable behavior? What is the language we use when we want to disagree with someone, right? How do we listen a certain way and react and absorb what people are saying? And then, you know, use that to form our own opinion, right? So, it was not only a discussion of a topic, but a discussion of how to discuss a topic. Um, so I'll turn it over to, excuse me, Mr. Patmos.
So, um, discussing a topic and how we discuss a topic, that's something that really showed, um, you could, you could see it in the classroom taking place. And watching it happen live was really kind of fascinating. Um, the different topics that we had, the Elgin marbles, Ben and Bronzes, um, Cuneiform, there's different backstories and pieces of history. And by the, at the point we are in the year, we've covered these topics. So, they had some depth of knowledge, plus the actual articles in front of them to kind of look at these things critically and think about the different perspectives that would be involved. Should we keep this, should we not, what have you? When students were working in groups, you heard different dialogues, different conversations, different, you know, I think they should, I think they shouldn't, why do I think this, why do I think differently? But what really made it good and powerful was when they started saying, I understand what you're saying, but I think. And that's, that's where this, you know, the real dialogue started to happen. And um, I've got a collection of quotes. I had a, you know, a Google Doc where they dumped in, you know, responses to questions and so forth afterwards. And, you know, like the second one there, it was interesting to discuss with someone with a different viewpoint. I think it allows everyone to understand different sides of a story. That's what we're looking for, is understanding and perspective. And with that, I'll turn it over to some of our students. You wanna hop up here?
Sure, sure.
You got a little microphone activity in there?
Um, hi, I'm Karamoki Yanni.
I'm Emerson Grahamins.
I'm Emily Basker.
Um, and when we did this in class, I think we learned about not only like the topic, but also how to be like a good classmate and a good listener, like during the conversations.
And also, I found it interesting to be able to like hear other people's perspective. It was like a new way of learning where you're able to collaborate with students and like go off of their opinions as well as yours. And it like allows you to have a more open mind when it comes to these different topics.
I agree. Like going into it, everyone kind of had their own like prior opinions. And it was really interesting to hear people especially change opinions as like our conversation went on. So, if you're originally like on one side and like re, like hearing other people talk, like realizing, oh, like there's so many other perspectives like I didn't consider.
Yeah, and it was like an interesting way to learn because instead of just getting like facts and articles from your teachers, like you and your classmates got to come up with your own opinions and your own like thinking about the subject.
Especially because some people definitely like held on to facts and more like, and others like really used like their own like beliefs and like morals. And like it was really interesting to hear everyone's different ideas.
Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have questions?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um, I'm curious if, uh, at any point, like anyone ever felt uncomfortable sharing their beliefs, views, or opinions? Was there ever a moment where, for example, there was one person who had a view that was taken from everybody else's? Did you feel like people felt comfortable?
Um, you're asking anyone or?
Anyone.
Yeah, I mean, I have three freshman classes, um, and it really went well in all three. I mean, there were definitely moments where people were passionate in a good way. It was good-natured. Um, but I never got the sense that anyone was hiding or felt like their opinion wasn't being listened to. Um, you know, certainly no one said that to me, um, but I didn't get that impression at all.
Students, do you agree or?
Um, personally, I feel like the way that we learned how to discuss it and like being open to everyone's opinions, it made it feel more comfortable in that, that side.
Yeah, there were like rules of like respect that like people would follow. So, no one was like getting like, like it wasn't like a place where someone would feel like they were like getting not able to speak.
I also agree because we split into groups beforehand. So, I think being able to express your opinion with a smaller group to start definitely helped. And then if other people were like, oh, I agree, then like when you talked, like those people would chime in and be like, I also agree, like an add-on.
That's great.
The way we introduced this to the entire faculty was a certain structure where we asked students to individually reflect on a topic, then go into a small group and then enter a larger discussion, and then at the end individually reflect so that there was multiple opportunities to form your own opinion before engaging. And then at the end, reflect on whether that had changed. I, just as someone who's taught in the high school and done debates, where students get really passionate and they wanna win, we really wanted to move away from that in this concept of civil discourse. There's no winning, there's no losing, there's no side that's right, that's wrong. We're just going for deeper understanding. So, hopefully, it sounds like that's what it felt like, so.
Great.
And now, you guys can head back to that side. So, you're not all scrunched together. I think we wanted to also show you that this, we, we are looking at developing this as a trajectory. So, these are our ninth graders. We're trying to build more di-, more complexity over time. As well as, um, Patrick mentioned that the articles were sort of labeled in their position. I think we're looking, over the course of a student's experience, for them to try to think about what position those articles take on their own. And then also, they're bring their own position and articles and background by the time they get to say junior or senior year. So, now, we're gonna have an opportunity to hear from some of our seniors on Alyssa Diaguardi, who teaches AP Lit to our seniors, in terms of what does that civil discourse look like? And how is it different from what we just heard about in ninth grade?
Okay, so this is, um, our second go with the literary canon and inquiry, um, civil discourse in AP Literature. And it's a particularly fun one for me, um, because it's really kind of like a capstone idea. It comes at the very end of the content for AP Literature and also the end of the content for pretty much all of English, um, for twelfth grade. Um, so they get to really, at the end, you guys will do this tomorrow. We're in the middle of the unit right now. Um, think back on their reading experience and how their reading and their conversations and discussion have sort of, um, influenced their own opinions about the experiences that they've had. Um, unlike some of the earlier discourses, students use an inquiry-based protocol that they're heavily familiar with through our work in literature, um, and develop their own questions. So, each class each year looks very different because students are the ones that are developing the questions themselves, refining them. Um, and there's a, a whole way to do it that kind of gets a lot of different levels of questioning in there. Um, and so what we have here are some of the sample questions from this year. This is from one of the three sections that I teach. And this is five of about ten from that section. Um, so students can use questions from their section, they can use questions from any other section. But essentially, what they do is they use these questions to create a lens for their reading. Um, the way that the reading is structured is we have views from within the canon and views from without the canon. Um, but as, uh, Ms. Meyer had alluded to, it's far more complex than that. Um, and we're not giving labels to the material past that. Students are at that point are discerning their own opinions on the pieces that they're given from within each of those views as well. So, views from within the canon largely focus on college programs and how prog-, uh, how college programs teach Western literature. And then views from without the canon give a lot of different views that might not necessarily be included um, in those kind of like ancient Civ grade books courses. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Miss, to talk a little bit more about that.
Introduce yourselves.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm Sean Jakett. I'm a senior in Ms. Diou's class.
Uh, oh, sorry. Uh, my name is Vega Metias. I'm also in Ms. Diou's Lit class.
So, I've, at this point in my high school career, have been doing civil discourse activities in every year of English. And from a personal level, I've enjoyed it a lot, especially this year in AP English Literature. Uh, not only do I have more experience with it, but being able to kind of have a degree of control over the discussion with the QFT questions has been really nice. Um, I think it strikes an excellent balance between having that control, but also keeping the discussion focused. Um, something that I have felt in the past about Bronxville is that it can kind of feel like a lot of the students here share similar beliefs or, or, and are all the same in some way. But the civil discourse activities that we've done have really helped enlighten me that there is a lot of diversity here in terms of what opinions students may have. And I think it's very important that we give as many opportunities as we can for people who might disagree to let their voice be heard. Um, and as someone who's entering college next year, I think I'm very lucky to have gone here because I feel that I'm very prepared to enter an environment where there's even more diverse opinions which are even, which are expressed even more than they are here, so.
Uh, yeah, adding on to what Sean said, I believe that the bounds between canon books, the read, the books that we read, like Great Gatsby, they're all great books. But the books that highlight different stories that we don't hear every day, because Bronxville's such a s- small town, we don't get that much like interactions. Like we don't, like some people have sort, like when people come to Bronxville, they come with different stories. Like for me, for example, I came into Bronxville six years ago. I'm Hispanic, I come from a different background. And when we read books, like our book club's book, it, I can connect to that story. And I feel like kids all around school can feel this way and they can connect to story, stories that, problems that may not be highlighted, they can feel comfortable to talk about that. And when we have those conversations, people are more comfortable to speak loudly, to make sure that their opinions are heard and that they're, and then when we have discussions of, in this lit, um, lit, we have discussions where everyone is involved. We have a game where we have four corners. People will say, I strongly disagree. And we'll have students talk about their decisions, but nobody is better or worse than the other. It's all opinions, but all of these different opinions make our conversation stronger and how we can develop more ideas based on the opinions that we get from different students.
Guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually very, if I may just say one more thing.
Yeah, please, questions.
This, this topic, literary canon, is very deep, close to my heart. And actually, I had a very lively discussion recently of an English department at a college my daughter is gonna attend next year, um, about how this has evolved over time. I'm curious, and I also have a Hispanic background, so it's interesting to hear you say that there are books that you might wanna identify, or still identify. But do you view that, that those books that you're suggesting are more contemporary? Or you're not finding the ability to, let's identify with classic literature?
Mm-hmm.
That I think one of the benefits of the classics certainly is so that it transcends time.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, as a student your age, you've seen well-informed, both of you.
Mm-hmm.
Would, did you ever have that discussion around that contemporary versus classic literature?
Yes, we did. We talked about just what books, like I remember, Ms. Diou and I talked about like what books are like, are often put in the front of the books, what books are discussed a lot. And some of the stories that, sorry, my bad. Some of the stories that don't highlight issues that people are scared to talk about, those bring up opinions and just strong, I feel like just having those conversations make us better and
Right.
just who we are and also just to manage to know the issues and what, to be aware of those issues.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'd also like to add, because we're in the middle of this unit, this is the last thing we do in literature, the question that you're asking is the content we're covering tomorrow.
Oh, great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle back with you.
Bye, guys.
Here, here those respondents.
Thank you.
Really great job.
Sorry. Um, so just to close, uh, where are we gonna go from here? I think we have an opportunity this summer for the English and social studies teachers, who now will all have had, had the opportunity to go through a full civil discourse in all of their classes, to come together, make sure we are aligning these skills over time and that we are building upon the skills each year. And really reflect on, were there good conversations? Because we have found some topics we thought would be great for a civil discourse aren't that interesting to students. So, we've been, uh, editing and adjusting those. Also, I've been trying to reach out to colleges and universities to hear what this looks like on a college campus, to inform our work. So, I've reached out to the, um, discourse programs at the universities listed here. Um, had a very interesting discussion with the head of the Morehead-Kane Dialogue and Discourse Program, uh, thinking about, you know, how we might structure a culminating experience for our seniors to prepare them to enter a college campus where a lot of different views are being discussed and how to do that in a civil way. But I think, you know, we've laid the groundwork, there's a lot we can build on. And then discussing what it looks like on a college campus, so we can make sure we have alignment there as well is gonna be helpful. So, thank you. Any other questions, we're happy to answer.
Other questions? Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Guys.
Have a good night. Have a good night. Personnel?
Great. Thank you. Um, I wanna take a moment, um, and just spend a few minutes on, uh, what is a very important appointment that I'm asking the board to consider this evening. And that is the appointment of Dr. Raymond Liverso as our high school principal. So, I just wanna take a few moments and read, um, excerpts from my recommendation. Um, so I am pleased to recommend Dr. Raymond Liverso as our high school's probationary principal effective July first. Uh, he has functioned as our interim high school principal since last July first. He is smart, insightful, transparent, welcomes feedback, solicits input when making a decision, and puts students at the center of his decision-making. Dr. Liverso is an instructional leader. He is thoughtful, thorough, and well-versed in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. He is extremely strong instructionally, which is clear in his objective feedback to faculty. Dr. Liverso has built strong relationships with all constituencies. He facilitates entry-plan conversations to assess our growth systems and structures. He has hosted lunches with students to hear what they love most about our high school and what they would like to see change. As a result, he has proposed new ideas. Dr. Liverso has been a strong partner with the PTA, supporting their programs and brainstorming with them on new programs. In addition, he has generate, generated innovative ideas for foundation grants. Dr. Liverso has been visible through the school day as well as at co-curricular activities, including athletic games, musical concerts, and theater productions. He has strong communication skills, as evidenced through his clear communication with the week ahead. And he has communicated effectively at high school council meetings and has engaged in productive dialogue with teachers, parents, and students. Dr. Liverso has worked collaboratively with the child study team to develop plans for every- Dr. LaVerse has worked collaboratively with the child study team to develop plans for every situation that is tailored to the student and their needs. He is extremely communicative with parents regarding plans to deal with academic and/or social emotional needs of specific students. Dr. LaVerse has developed a strong team with his assistant principal that has resulted in a smooth leadership transition in our high school. He works extremely well with his administrative colleagues to ensure the continuity of our student-centered educational approach. So it is without hesitation that I recommend Dr. LaVerse as our high school principal with a three-year probationary period beginning July first. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you.
The rest of the agenda, we've had an opportunity to review an executive session, which is mainly leave replacements and leaves for the remainder of the school year. You've had an opportunity to ask me questions. And I just wanna thank Janice Awers, who is one of our certified occupational therapy assistants. She's been with us for fourteen years and has made the decision to retire, which is certainly our loss, although we are very happy for her as she gets to enjoy her two grandchildren for a better part of the day. So we wish her well in her retirement. And I ask you to consider items A through S, please.
Okay, any other questions, Dr. Kelly? I get a motion to approve personal action items.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Dr. LaVerse. I think we're onto Mr. Carlin, thank you.
That would be, uh, we'll start with a financial update for the current year. It's kind of similar to last month. Continues to be conservative, and as is typical for this time of year, it's growing slowly. Expenditures, however, continue to be tight, I'm not projecting very much of a surplus there, but that will grow as we close down small purchase orders towards the end of the year. Let's see, revenues are great. You know, interest income, regular education tuition students and special education tuition have all been strong all year long. Now, we've also completed invoicing our cost of health services provided to St. Joe's and Chapel School. That's gonna overcome a slight shortfall in our borderline properties taxes. And I'm now forecasting eight hundred sixty-one thousand revenue surplus and over a million in total, which is more than enough, obviously, to cover the five hundred thousand dollar fund balance allocation to offset the tax levy that we're proposing in, for referendum on May twentieth. And we'll help keep our reserves intact as we head into the, the building project, which is also on the ballot for May twentieth. Just have a little something to say about the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The board adopted it at its last meeting with a tax levy increase of one point two percent. And we'll take time to review it at the public hearing on May eighth, for vote again on May twentieth. And then I have an updated version of what I presented at the last meeting for the capital project presentation.
On the calendar?
Yeah, I have some slides. They kind of, we worked with our architects to take the content. They, they cut the slides in half while keeping most of the content, which was really good, and adding some nice graphics. Although the graphics are a little dated there in the front, Dan. Yeah. Just imagine flowers. Next one. You know, they added the map so people can say where the, when I refer to the D Wing, where it is. I guess that would be in the southeastern corner along Midland Avenue, just think elementary school. Two years ago, land associates, our consulting architects, as required by the State Education Department, updated our five-year capital plan. And we identified about sixty million dollars worth of work that could be done around the building grounds. The board has worked diligently through both the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee to understand, prioritize, and refine the most needed work and potential budget. And when I say the most needed work, there are some things that could be deferred, you know, maybe another seven or eight years when more, more financing ability becomes available. But we, we kind of fell on a number of about twenty million dollars of work, of total work which we need to do. And it, and I say need, I mean need, it's, it's really not optional, although if the budget gets voted down, you know, we will have to cope, or if, if the project gets voted down, we'll have to cope. But the swallow, following slides do show those needs in seven areas. Building envelope improvements, this is probably one of the more drastic needs and where most of the dollars for the project are located. We have some deteriorating masonry in this eighty-year-old D Wing, which houses the elementary school. Windows are in poor condition as well, and should be replaced in conjunction with brick and steel repair work. And the bottom right slide, you can kind of see, that's taken from the ground looking upward. You see bricks bulging out a little bit. And that's, those are areas of concern where we think the steel, structural steel may be deteriorating. So the project kind of has a budget figure estimating what it would take to repair those areas where we think the steel is deteriorating and, and replace. Next slide, please. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements. Another big-ticket item is the replacement of twelve-unit ventilators in elementary classrooms, as they are over sixty years old as well. And that's, you know, will be both more efficient airflow and energy use. Next slide, please. Flooring in much of the D Wing is in need of replacement. And it also includes asbestos abatement, as the original layers below the current deteriorate, deteriorating layers are likely asbestos laden. Here are some pictures consistent with the current conditions that we want to address. Note the floor saddle in the middle bottom slide. You know, we actually have a piece of oak there that raises the classroom floor almost an inch above the hallway floor, and that's just layers of old flooring underneath that that does that. And that will all be taken out. And we, ceiling and wall improvements haven't been made since their installation in the nineteen sixties. For addressing the floors in many of these classrooms, the board thought it would be prudent to address the walls and ceilings at the same time, just in terms of efficiency. And continuing the updating theme in the D Wing is the casework, which is built-in storage. You know, that's original too. We're budgeting up to an average of fifty linear feet in each of the twenty-four classrooms. Toilet room improvements, anybody in the building, that's pretty self-explanatory. The PTA helped us renovate a bunch of toilets a few years ago, I guess, well, at this point, it's over ten years ago. And they still remain in great shape. We want to address some of the remaining ones that have not been addressed in decades, and please forgive the pictures. And then a few miscellaneous projects. As the board toured the locker rooms, we noticed that the tile and fixtures were in very good shape. We also noticed that the boys' locker room only had one toilet and three showers. In terms of modern locker room usage, trading a shower stall or two for additional toilet facilities would be much more useful. Configuring of the lockers could be addressed in the future through the maintenance budget, as that would be a relatively low-cost item. We also have two fire doors that are pre-existing that we want to bring up to modern codes. And the main elevator needs to be refurbished. We also need to replace and widen some sidewalks on both Midland, well, more, some on Midland and Meadow Avenue. I think Midland, we're in pretty good shape in most areas, but there's a few areas we need. But particularly in front of, kind of from the new parking lot over on Meadow Avenue to the gravel lot, those, those need to go and get widened. So our consolidated budget for construction sits at about fourteen million. Put a ten percent contingency on that, and ten and a quarter percent escalation, because we'll be doing this work in about two or three years. On top of that, gives us, in one of my opinion right now, is probably a, a good conservative budget of almost seventeen million in construction costs. Architect and engineering fees, about one point four million. We hire a construction manager to kind of coordinate everything and act as our advocate during the process. And then we have other soft costs, including legal inspections, some furniture, and other, other fees, testing, et cetera, and a reserve on those soft costs of about ten percent. And that gives us a grand total of about twenty million dollars. Now, to finance that, we're looking at using five million dollars from our construction reserve. And looking at a matrix of rates and amortizations from ten, fifteen, to twenty years, we're looking at probably about a million dollars as the sweet spot. Now, if we could get rates where we got them the last time we issued bonds, we'd be looking at a fifteen-year amortization pretty easily. 'Cause we are under one percent for one of our bonds. Going out twenty years, we can, we can easily get, or we can get just about there in the current rate environment. The good news is, we have about three years to see where rates go over that period of time. And we could even sit until after the project is completed before we issue the bonds. So that probably gives us, you know, closer to four to five years to hopefully hit a nice sweet spot where we can issue the bonds. Uh, next slide, sweet, please, Connie. Still gotta do a little work on this one. But what this slide tells us is that our debt service, what it would look like if we borrow fifteen million and three percent over a twenty-year amortization, annual payments of about a million dollars, added to our current debt service. And that's, the new debt is represented by the green area. The first blue arrow shows our current debt service budget of about two point seven million dollars. The blue arrow to the right projects our two thousand thirty, thirty-one debt service. At a rate of about two point eight million after both the September two thousand seventeen bond and the March two thousand twenty bonds are paid off. The project we're now discussion, discussing is issued either, this year has it issued in two thousand twenty-eight. But again, depending on the rate environment and what we choose to do, how, we could issue bonds in two thousand, either sooner if rate environment is positive, or later. We have that flexibility. The red arrow, the red arrows show the transitional period during which a net additional seven hundred twenty thousand is necessary. And that's if, if we issue bonds in two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Let's see. And we need about seven hundred twenty thousand dollars to get us to the two point eight million at two thousand thirty, thirty-one. We currently have a debt service fund balance at about three point one million. However, two million is committed as premiums on bonds that were already issued. And that leaves us about one point one million to help address two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight through two thousand thirty, thirty-one, if needed, which is more than enough. And then by two thousand thirty, thirty-one, we should be back fairly close to where our current debt service budget is, especially considering estimated additional building aid of between one hundred and two hundred thousand, which will not kick in until after we complete the final cost report for the project. So we have a year delay after that till that kicks in. But the good news is, we do have flexibility in terms of money we, we already maintain in our debt service fund, building aid we expect to receive in the future, and amortization and interest rates to get this. The board was pushing me earlier to commit to tax neutral, and, you know, I, with too many variables, I can't commit to tax neutral, but it's looking very good in that direction. And next steps. We have a visual of when milestones could be. Again, we have a public hearing May eighth, where we'll present this again. May twentieth is the referendum, vote on the budget and the capital plans. And then our, if, if it's approved, our architects get, and our construction manager get to work on schematic designs, and then submit them to the State Education Department. And that's estimated, you know, between, the year, between June two thousand twenty-five and June two thousand twenty-six. There is a small chance we might be able to get going in the summer of twenty-six, but I, I think it's probably more likely that it'll be after the summer of twenty twenty-six. Probably the summer of twenty twenty-seven, and it'll take at least two summers, in my opinion. But I think it's a very good plan for some much-needed work. And we would, any, we would also allow any non-intrusive second shift work to continue through the year if possible to tighten that timeline.
Any questions for Dan or Fisher Carter?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thanks to both the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee. You know, it was very, when we saw the sixty million dollar number, you know, well over a year ago, it was daunting. I think we're in a good spot.
Financial action items?
Now, since this, this agenda went out before the break, I'm actually, I, I asked the board to approve our property tax report card, which I have already completed for SED, without supplying the board a copy of the property tax report card. I did email the board that before I came in tonight, and I emailed you, Connie, is there any way you can pull it up?
Yeah, if you want me to flash it on the screen.
Yeah, if you can. Just flash it on the screen. It is a, um, yeah, as I mentioned, it's necessary to file with the State Education Department and approved by the board. It refers to the adopted budget that the board approved at the last meeting. Going forward with that budget, the tax cap, the tax levy, and projected fund balance data as reviewed in two, the two workshops in February, March, and the last few board meetings. It's, it's data the board has already seen, just submitted to the State Education Department. So they can verify that we are not exceeding our tax cap going into the referendum. So I asked the board to approve that so we can meet the state's timeline. So I asked the board to approve that so we can meet the state's timeline.
Why don't we go through the other action items we took in the other day?
Sure, we have uh, you know, the town, we have uh, let's see, an engagement letter uh for the Bonadilla Group for our annual audit. I'm, I'm apprehensive about the Bonadilla Group, but I'm very encouraged with our, our new treasurer. He's a, he's a pit bull. Every time he comes, he comes into my office, he has me sweating.
Good luck.
Albert, Albert is great, so I, again, I thank the board for approving his hire. Um, and, you know, he, I, he's already fixed a bunch of issues. I think this is going to be the smoothest audit we've had in a bunch of years, if I would.
Um, so is the audit committee recommending um the engagement, we improve the engagement?
Yeah, we did a, uh, we did a, the audit committee did not meet, but we did a, an RFP with the Bonadilla Group, um, I guess, two years ago. This may be the third year, five-year RFP. If we, if we're not satisfied with their performance this year, I would recommend that we probably do another, an RFP next year. And we have foundation grants. Uh, a whole slew of them came through. Um, you know, what can we say about the foundation? We're eternally grateful to them. They've, um, they're extremely supportive of uh, you know, some of our ideas uh that, that have really helped us, you know, be one of the best, uh, best school districts in the country. You know, and they're a big part of it.
I just want to point out, um, the board has had an opportunity to review these. Um, that uh Anne had written a grant off-cycle uh for an innovative architect who helped us design the learning commons um in the high school. Um, and uh we asked the foundation to consider engaging with him to think about space in the elementary school that can be more innovative. Um, we're going to be doing, hopefully, a lot of work in the elementary school, and we wanted to uh not lose an opportunity um to be able to think about some of those spaces differently. Um, and so uh the foundation approved his work um uh to look at what is currently the library, which we would rename the Curiosity Lab. Um, and then a potential learning commons up on the fourth floor for the fifth graders primarily. Um, and then also to think about um innovative educational space in our uh elementary STEM design lab, uh which is currently our technology room. Um, so we're very grateful that um the, the foundation approved those uh because I think that can really help elevate um the space in the elementary school.
And then between that and the designated fund grants from, for the new technology innovation fund and uh special education designated fund, which has been very helpful for a long time. It's almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of grants, just, you know.
Tremendous.
For this month.
Just tremendous. Okay, I think we got one more thing on.
Yes, um, at an earlier meeting this year, uh, the board authorized our contracted buses to have stop activated external cameras installed at no cost to us. They are now asking for internal safety cameras to be installed at no cost to us. And uh, we, we don't feel we need the cameras on our own busses because we always have coaches on our own bus or teachers when we're going on a field trip on our own bus or something like that. But when we're transporting private school, uh Bronxville residents to private schools, uh, there may only be a bus driver on those busses, so there, we think this is a good idea.
Understood, okay.
And it's, at no cost to us. They just need the approval.
Can I just ask some, go back to the audit engagement letter, the audit engagement letter committee? Um, I read it and, you know, I, I can't believe they do our audit for the fee they charge us, it's pretty low. Um, and I can appreciate, you know, we've been with them for a few years and we've got several new people in your office, and it would not be easy to have a new auditor this summer. But I just want to make sure you're comfortable moving forward with them this year. And if you want, we could, we could defer this to the next meeting and you can discuss with the audit committee if you prefer.
I, this is, this is what I prefer. I prefer one more year at least with the Bonadilla Group, with, with a new treasurer.
Yeah.
Who I, who I think uh can take more control of the audit.
Yeah.
Um, you know, part of the reason the fees are so low is because we do all the work. You know, now it's almost a remote audit. We gather all the data and upload it, whereas the auditing firms used to come in and uh, and gather it themselves. Um, I, you know, I, I think, I think one more year.
Okay.
And see how it goes.
Any other questions for Dan? All right, again, a motion to approve financial action items A through D. Motion. Second? All in favor? Okay.
Top of the BOSI's.
Yes, to both of you.
Yeah, as a component member of BOSI's, we are assessed a portion of their administrative and capital budgets uh based on our enrollment as a percentage of all the BOSI's component districts. And that figure for Bronxville this year, or next year I should say, is two, about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars compared to about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's an increase of uh about point four percent. Uh, this figure is included in the budget that we adopted last month for next year. Each district is required to vote, to vote on the BOSI's administrative and capital budget. If the budget were defeated, BOSI's would be limited at their prior year budget. Other than these payments, we use BOSI's for all facets of technology, uh financial student information, software, hardware, network management, firewalls, backup, et cetera, uh transportation management, professional development, uh athletics, scheduling and officiating, uh recruitment and other HR services, some special education services, uh career and technical students on occasion, and a host of other smaller cooperative services totaling around two million dollars. Uh, we in turn receive about seven hundred thousand dollars in BOSI's aid against these expenditures for a net cost of about one point three million. Uh, in my opinion, BOSI's has been a valued partner over the last decade, and in the past, boards have supported uh BOSI's administrative and capital budgets that were in line with our budgets. Uh, we're also required to vote on BOSI's board candidates. I think they usually run unopposed.
Take that one out of the screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's where we are tonight.
Okay, so I get a motion to approve the budget administrative component of the BOSI's uh.
Motion. Second?
All in favor? Aye, okay, and then I need another motion on the ballot, the BOSI's ballot that is disclosed.
Do we have to vote for them? I mean, I don't.
I, I, I understand, it's, I mean, what we're looking at here are three candidates that, uh, like you say, they typically run unopposed, but we are compelled, as the students were compelled to show up tonight, to vote for this ballot. So, yes, I'm sorry to say that, uh, yeah, you never want to really vote for people or individuals that you don't actually know, but we, this is part of the process with BOSI's. So, would you like to uh put in the first motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay.
I thought it was interesting, um, on, on this year's, um, on the memo you did, Dan, this year and last year, oh no, maybe this is, it, it seems like our share is growing very slowly or staying relatively flat because our enrollment relative to other districts for the last couple of years has either declined or been.
It's, it's about a two-year lag on their budget. So we're going to see probably a jump in a year or two in BOSI's with the thirty students we went up uh the current year we're in.
Okay.
So, and we're projecting flat for next year, so, you know, we'll, we'll see our pain in a year or two probably. But our enrollment has been on a steady decline, which has helped keep that flat for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I think, are we on to board reports?
I think facilities, just a quick facilities report.
Did you skip that? Go ahead.
Mike in the, Mike Lee and the guys have worked hard over the break, uh deep cleaning and floor waxing to get ready for the spring. Uh, the front lawn renovation, you know, thank you to the PTA for all their support. Uh, starting to show colors. Uh, contracts are about done with our contractor, uh Pirati, for summer security vestibule and flood pump structure um construction. And we've been meeting for planning um the uh, tho- both those projects and then also meeting with the construction manager, getting ready, hopefully, for a positive referendum.
Okay.
Everything looks good so far. There's no, you know, there's, I don't see any mines floating in the water.
Good to hear.
So far. And no facilities action items?
No. Okay. All right, I think we'll move on to committee reports. I know, Eddie, I think there was a safety committee meeting.
Um, yeah, Dan took all the fun stuff from facilities, so thanks, Dan, I appreciate that. Um, we got the security vestibule, which is exciting. That'll be the, the last of the three entrances at the school that'll be fully secure now in the front by the flight pole and the pump enclosure, um, which will add to the investments that we put into the flood pumps, which is great. Those things are working like exactly the way they're supposed to. Thanks to Mike Lee and his team, who come down here in the middle of the night and go out there and take care of them. Um, mentioned the sidewalk on Meadow, which could use some TLC and some expanding. Um, health and safety, the meeting went really well. We talked about a number of topics, um, firearms, um, uh headlights is always a big one at that meeting, so we're, we're happy to report that's uh somewhat under control. Um, they seem to be dying off, whatever the parents are using at home is working. Um, field usage always comes up, you know, we want to make sure that the fields are used as much by our um residents as, as much as possible. Um, and so uh Vic, uh Perrini, our head of security and his team have been doing a great job um trying to move folks along who come out there for organized pickup games when they're not supposed to. Uh, you know, those fields have lifespans and they cost us all money to maintain and replace, so we're trying to make sure that the Bronxville residents get the most out of them. Um, the Bronxville School Foundation is reviewing all grants. Um, they've got a bunch of exciting grants uh that they're looking at. Um, again, we're very grateful for them. And I know Pete would want me to mention the PTA. Um, they've got their spring social, uh socials coming up, which is very, it's always the best parties of the year, fall and the spring PTA socials, so looking forward to getting those uh emails soon, hopefully, um, get those tickets. And Memorial Day um coming up soon, so thanks to the PTA for all you guys there.
Perfect, thank you. Any other updates?
Oh, I, one more, um, Mike Brandis is going to donate himself to the dump tank uh on Memorial Day to the highest bidder, and the proceeds will go to uh the rest of the board's choice of charities. So thank you, Mike, for volunteering that, for all the work you've done.
Thank you for making that public knowledge, yes.
Appreciate it.
I'm game. All right, uh, any other updates, Susan or uh Sarah? Or Susan? No, okay. All right, I think uh we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the queue? Okay, no one in the room. Anything else? You know, I try to make it eight o'clock, it's eight twelve, but pretty close anyway. Thank you for coming, especially to the students and to everybody. Congratulations again, Dr. Liverso, welcome. We look forward to all your efforts in the high school. Have a great night, thank you. Need a motion to adjourn, oh! All in favor? Aye, wow, food down.